Good evening, everyone. My name is Jerry Cochran, and I would like to call the City of Pasco Planning Commission meeting to order. I'd like to welcome all those in attendance this evening and ask you to join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To begin tonight's meeting, I would like to ask the clerk to call the roll.
Tanya Bowers.
Present.
Paul Mendez.
Present.
Kim Laraman.
Present.
Abel Campos.
Present.
Isaac Myron.
Present.
Rachel Teal.
Present.
Jay Handler.
Present.
Jerry Cochran.
Present.
Mr. Chair, there are eight members present. We do have a quorum.
Thank you. The Planning Commission is an advisory board made up of volunteers appointed by the city council. The purpose of the Planning Commission is to provide recommendations to city council regarding changes to the city's comprehensive plan, land use updates, block grant allocations, and zoning code. The Planning Commission is tasked with considering the long-term growth and development of the community, the impact of land use decisions on the community, livability, economic opportunity, housing affordability, public services, and the environment. I'd like to recommend or remind the audience, tonight's proceedings are being broadcast live on the City of Pasco's Facebook page and on Charter Cable Channel 191 and will be rebroadcast several times during the next month. The meeting will also be recorded, and you can watch it on the City of Pasco's website, which is pasco-woa.gov. Click on the video on demand link and make your selection there. There are copies of the meeting agenda available online and on the City of Pasco website, and so you may follow along with the meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask the audience that you mute your cell phones and microphones to prevent interruptions during our meeting. For those present this evening, when you are given the opportunity to address the commission, please raise your hand so that we'll know you'd like to address the commission. Then speak clearly into the microphone and state your name and city of address for our records. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I need to remind the audience and the Planning Commission that Washington State law requires public meetings like the one being held this evening not only to be fair but also to appear fair. In addition, Washington State law prohibits the Planning Commission members from participating in discussions or decisions in which the member may have a direct interest or may be either benefit or harm by the Planning Commission's decision. Any objection to any Planning Commission member hearing any matter on tonight's agenda needs to be aired at this time or it will be waived. First, are there any Planning Commission members who have a declaration at this time regarding any of the items on the agenda? Let the record show that none declared. Second, is there anyone in the audience this evening who would object to any Planning Commission member hearing any of the items on the agenda? Let the record show, there were no declarations. We value your input. As a Planning Commission, we need and value that input. It helps us to understand the issues more clearly and to make better recommendations to city council. Furthermore, in many cases, your input here at the Planning Commission meeting is your only opportunity to get your facts and opinions placed on the official record of the city council that it will use in making its decision. I encourage you to take full advantage of the opportunity. The first and next item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes from February 17th, 2022. These meeting minutes were mailed out to the commissioners ahead of time, and I trust you had an opportunity to take a look at them, and I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes at this time.
This is Commissioner Bowers. I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowers. Do I have a second?
Second. I'd like to...
Was that Commissioner Mendez?
Yes. Yes, it is.
All right. It was moved by Commissioner Bowers and seconded by Commissioner Mendez to approve the meeting minutes as presented. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? So let the record show that the meeting minutes were unanimously approved. We have no unfinished business on the agenda, so we'll move right to, or old business, we'll remove right to the public hearing. The first item and only item on the public hearings is the block grant item, the 2021 Consolidated Annual Plan Evaluation Report, Master File BGAP 2022-001, and I believe Mrs. Webb is going to address this on this.
Good evening, Planning Commission members. The item before you tonight is the last step in the CDBG grant cycle process for the program year 2021. In your packets tonight is a memorandum along with the 2021 Consolidated Annual Plan Evaluation Report, also known as the CAEPER. While I am not going to read the memorandum verbatim, it goes over the overview of the program, assessment of goals and objectives, source of funds, use of funds, and actual expenditures. As a quick reference, the grant cycle begins in May of each year, public hearings are conducted in June and July, and all recommendations are sent to council for approval. In 2020, council approved Resolutions 3959, 3977, and 4002 approving the 2021 allocations and the work plans for the CDBGCV funds. During the program year, activities are carried out in accordance with the approved plan. Three months after the end of the program year, the CAEPER is submitted to HUD for reporting on our progress with meeting the goals of the annual action plan. The next few slides briefly summarize our performance in carrying out the goals and strategies in the 2021 Annual Action Plan. This screen summarizes budget to actual for the 2021 Annual Action Plan activities by goal, which are reported. The goals we have are affordable housing, community and economic development, homeless housing, and priority public services. PR02 reports that 2020 activities used 554,337 of the budget. PR03 reports all activities in 2021 were 1,163,623, which includes prior years' funds, and these reports are in the CAEPER that is in your packet. Additional funds for the CDBGCV to prevent, prepare, and respond to COVID are reported separately. This is the graph of the data that was presented on the previous slide, which in the blue is the proposed and the brown is the actual of what was expended. The next slide, please. This slide indicates the 2021 beneficiaries proposed to actual. Totals are reported through quarterly reports from the subrecipients, which include, but not limited to, the Pasco Specialty Kitchen, which retained and created jobs, the Pasco Code Enforcement resolved cases, civic centers, senior centers, the YMCA, the Arc of Tri-Cities, and the scholarship programs, which were all funded in 2021. Public facility improvements activities, like Peanuts Park, are only reported when completed, and as of this time, it's not completed 100% with paying it out, so that's why those actual beneficiaries are not listed on there. And with that, city staff would like to thank the members of the Planning Commission for your time and assistance, and I am here for any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions on the report memo?
This is Commissioner Bowers.
Hey, Commissioner Bowers. Commissioner Myron was just speaking up. Can you, can I let him go, and then I'll call on you?
Please.
Thank you. So, thank you so much for the report and for all the work that went into this. Just for my own edification again, once the actual funds come in, the budget is modified based on what's available, but it's generally allocated to a close percentage of what the budget was allocated for, is that correct?
Yes, so, which, we should have already received our letter, but we haven't gone it. Hudson's out an initial funding agreement, which we should have gotten in February, but their budget was just approved last week, so they have 60 days from then to send out the allocations with the initial funding, and we go based on that of what we might be per getting. Most of the time when we receive the letter at the end of the year, which normally would come in June or July, but last year we got it in September, then we do the adjustments of, because that's what our actual budget will be then, so.
Okay, great. And the only other comment I had was in regards to CR25 on Page 13, the homelessness and other special needs goal, just sort of acknowledging, again, that this is, I think, an area of growth for achieving additional goals related to homelessness. In the report, the city mentioned, not, there's currently not direct activity involved in addressing homeless individuals within the community block structure. And I guess my question would be, since the city is involved in the continuum of care board, that if future applicants came forward with proposals, that they're qualified, to be able to address this issue, that they would be able to apply for funding, and this could be an area of future growth down the road?
Yes, it would be.
Okay, great. Thank you again for helping me remember. It's always this time of year I'm trying to recall what we discussed last time, so thanks for all the great work.
Thank you, Commissioner Myron. How about Commissioner Bowers? Thank you for being patient.
Thank you so much, and Commissioner Myron beat me to the punch. I just wanted to say how much I appreciate this report on the progress that's been made up to date on our CDBG funds. I don't recall seeing something quite this detailed. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowers. Other commissioners with comments or feedback or questions?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Mendez. I just had a comment or a question, I guess. So from looking at the goals of the CDBG grant and the home investment program, I think you mentioned that one of the goals was to provide for decent housing, economic development, and suitable living environment, but if you look at the actual money that was spent, we spent 6% on economic development, 15% on housing, and 60% on public facility improvements. Just curious, well, that caught my eye. I'm just curious if we need to provide additional justification for that or concerns? And anyways, thank you.
So each year when we open the application process, which we will be doing in April of this year, and we have the application process open for a month, those applications are what gets funded. So if we do not receive any applications to help with homelessness or a beneficiary that might be able to do something like that, that's where our shortfall is.
Anything else from the commissioners? Well, commissioners, if there are no other questions or feedback, I would entertain a motion. There is a motion at the end of the memo.
Sir, is this a public hearing?
Yes. Yeah. Oh, you're right. Is there any, we have to go to public hearing first. Gotcha. Sorry about that. We also will go ahead and open up the public hearing for this right now. Individuals who wish to speak on this particular item, now is the time to come forward and speak. Again, please state your name and city of address for the record. Calling a second time for anyone to speak. And a final time, and we will close the public hearing. Thank you, everyone. Now, I would go ahead and entertain a motion for approval of the memo, of the evaluation report, I should say.
This is Commissioner Bowers. I move the Planning Commission close the public hearing and recommend the city manager approve the 2021 Consolidated Annual Plan Evaluation Report as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowers. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Handler, aye second.
Thank you, Commissioner Handler. We have a move by Commissioner Bowers and seconded by Commissioner Handler to approve the consolidated annual plan evaluated report as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Let the record show that it was moved by Commissioner Bowers and seconded by Commissioner Handler, and the motion passed unanimously. I think that concludes our public hearing items, and we can move on to workshop. Thank you, Ms. Webb.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. The purpose of this update to the commission is to provide the Planning Commission with an update on the proposal to amend the municipal code to increase flexibility for the construction of both single-family and multifamily housing. On the next slide, the objectives of this project or the amendment is to increase flexibility in housing design and options, address the multifamily development standards, and I've mentioned at prior meetings that the city currently does not have a set of multifamily development standards. Increase in these options to allow for density with design and scale in mind and predictability for developers and the development review process. For this presentation, actually on the prior slide, there we go, the next one. Obviously, what we covered in February at a high level were lot sizes, building orientations, parking, and driveway. And for this presentation, I'd like to introduce our consultant, who's been working with the city in a variety of efforts, but particularly with regards to housing, and that is produce Onesa with Onesa and Associates, who is on the line and will guide us through tonight's presentation regarding neighborhood design, site design standards, and building design standards.
Thank you, welcome.
Can you hear me okay?
We can.
All right. Yeah, thanks Jacob for introducing, and it's great to be here with you all this evening. Jacob, as Jacob mentioned, that you have already seen some of the items or topics of this presentation. So if, tonight, we are going to be talking about some of the items. One is the neighborhood design, site design standards, and building design standards. So as Jacob mentioned, that the market right now has demand for many different residential products, not just single-family, and you already have some of those in Pasco already. So it's just the design guidelines and standards would help provide more flexibility and more market-based products. Let's go to the next slide. So neighborhood design, what we would like to propose is that you want to maintain the neighborhood character in terms of how it is compatible with another, so, single-family versus multifamily when they're next to each other on the top image that you see, although they're different in mass and scale, but they are consistent and compatible looking. So we are going to look at building height, width, and depth, roof lines, and then other architectural features, how they would match with the existing neighborhood. And this does not mean that somebody cannot come and provide more creative design solutions. That would always be an option in this overall intent. Next slide. So these are the housing products that I was telling you about, that we market now require a lot more and variety of housing products than just the single-family housing. And not only this provides more affordability, but it also gives you the character and quality of the, and variety of the neighborhood character. So we have duplex, as you see, triplex and fourplexes, bungalow court, townhouse, live-work units, and courtyard apartments. So what it does is it provides choices for all income groups to access to the housing market. We call this missing middle housing types. This has been a very popular term in the housing market these days. Let's go to the next slide. So some of the, some of the design standards that we talk about is how we can remove the barriers of housing products, and we want to address lot frontage, lot coverage, landscaping, and many other standards, but we will go over those now. Let's go to the next slide. So this gives you some idea in terms of sketches, is like how the lot frontage could vary, and remember that you have many different zones, there's R1, R2, R3, R4, and lot sizes would vary, and along with the sizes, your lot frontage will vary as well. So what we are trying to show you here, on the left side, is the regular single-family home, where based on the zoning, your lot frontage could be 30 feet to 60 feet. The one next to that is single-family detached, but it shares a driveway. When you have a shared driveway, what it does is it would allow you somewhat of a narrower lot available for single-family market, so, and then the standard could, frontage could still be, depending on the zoning, 30 to 60 feet. On the, on the middle, like on the third from the left, what you see is a townhome, and they're attached dwelling units, they're single-family but attached, not detached. And these products would require less lot frontage, because they have, the building footprint is narrow, and the lot frontage could be less than your typical single-family, so you could actually fit housing, more housing and more density into this. And on the right side, this is a typical townhome layout when you have multiple townhomes, and you have, you have these products in Pasco and in Tri-Cities and Richland as well, that you have attached dwelling units, several dwelling units sharing a common parking lot, and some would even have garages inbuilt, but you don't need that big lot frontage for those. So those are some of the examples we wanted to show you. Let's go to the next slide. And now we are talking about setbacks, and setback standards are one of the important aspects in order to remove the barriers for affordable housing. So right now, Pasco code, zoning code, has 20 feet setback. We are proposing to have 15-foot front yard setback, and your rear yard setback, and Jacob, please chime in, you have a different set of standards for rear yard, but we're seeing that 15 feet is becoming more popular in the market, and when you have a shared driveway, your side yard could vary, depending on the sketches, but then if it's individual lot, then your side yard remains the same, five feet. But what we are proposing here on the middle sketch here, that if your living unit is fronting the road and your garage is setback 20 feet, then you could actually do within 15 feet setback. So that's, that's what this code is proposing, code amendment is proposing. This is, this has been working in Kennewick, and we think that this would be a good way to make the garage less prominent and your living units being more visible. On the right side, for small lot homes and then townhomes especially, you can consider even less than 15 feet, because your parking is all behind. So from the back of the walk or back of the property line, you could consider 10 feet, and rear yard could be 10 feet as well. So you put more space in the middle that could work as your open space and then parking. Let's go to the next slide. I know we are talking about a lot of dimensions, but this will come back to you again. So building design, this is something we are recommending, that you don't want a massive looking building. So in order to break the mass, massive looking building, you need to, buildings need to have modulation and articulation, and you see on the left side, how you could, every 30 feet, you could have the building protrusion and the building setback, things like that. And then there are different ways that you could do the modulation, as the middle sketch shows, that you could add porch in a home, and then balcony, recess facade, and dormers, the different, even traditional design, you could just do the massing and sort of remove the bulk look of the building. On the right side, that's an image of a multifamily home in Richland, so that you will see that how the mass has been, the modulation has been done, so it does not look a massive building. Let's go to the next slide. And Jacob, let me know when I need to stop. So this is, this is another example of what the products that you already have in Pasco, and you have this townhomes, attached dwelling units, and those have been working, and you already have great established neighborhoods. So what we're, what we're, this design standards will do is we'll introduce new housing products that would meet the market demand and that would provide more flexibility, and then we'll meet the, add to the existing housing stock. Next slide. This is another example of what you already have. These are some of the multifamily and attached dwelling units that you already have. So it's not going to be too difficult to follow some of the existing trends, and having some clarity in the design guidelines would help, help better predictability for developers. Next slide. And back to you, Jacob, for the schedule. Thank you.
Thank you, Onesa. And so, again, wanted to provide the Planning Commission with a tentative schedule with how we'd like to proceed with this proposal, February through April, continue with workshops and public hearings with an intended recommendation. Hopefully by May, that will allow us to take this to council in the early summer. I do want to provide the Planning Commission with an opportunity to ask either staff or our consultant, produce Onesa, any questions, but I also want to reiterate that similar to the House 1923 amendments that were adopted not too long ago by council in January, actually, that these are intended to provide seemingly ultimate flexibility for both a private property owner and those on the builder's side. We have been in communication, in fact, we met this week with the director and a local stakeholder builder with the Home Builder Association of the Tri-Cities, and they, and both staff and the association are working on this in a coordinated effort to make sure that what we're proposing and what they've proposed are in line with each other. What we are interested in hearing from the Planning Commission is if there are any questions, how we can address them, so we can make sure to do that either tonight or at the next meeting. But if there is a level of comfort with moving forward, we think on our end, we would be prepared, be ready for a public hearing at the April Planning Commission meeting, likely recommend a continuation of that hearing, so at least there's two opportunities for members of the public or others to provide input and comment on the proposal, similar to, and also as well with the Planning Commission. So I'll conclude with that, but again, happy to answer any questions and also offer our consultant, produce Onesa, with an opportunity to provide answers as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Commissioners, any questions or feedback or guidance to the staff on this?
Just a quick question to staff. So you would envision a amended section of code to capture these changes, so it'd be in existing areas of the code, or would there need to be any new areas? So it'd be in, in existing, uh, areas of the code, or would there need to be any, any new areas? I, I don't expect that there would be new, uh, there certainly won't be a new title or new section. Um, as, uh, Ferruce had mentioned, that we already have the R1, 2 and 3, 4 zoning code, and also RS12 and RS20. Um, so our, our proposal would be to come back with a code amendment that amends those sections and portions of the municipal code. And there's other as well, for, and, for instance, Title 21 with regards to subdivision regulations for the urban growth area. There's likely some portions of that code that will need to be refined or touched up with the intent of this proposal. But what the Planning Commission eventually council would see would be a code amendment that takes portions of, for instance, R1, where the R1 setback currently is in the rear equal to dwelling height, that would be amended to, uh, the, uh, whatever the recommendation for the Planning Commission is. So it'd be a lot of underlines and strikeouts for this one, replacing what we currently have with what's being proposed here, um, with the intent of allowing, um, sort of ultimate flexibility. Um, and while there are requirements, I think it might be easier to, to think of them more as parameters.
And, uh, Chairman, if I may, I, I just want to reiterate what, uh, Onesa had mentioned earlier. What this does is eliminates the prohibition that you have seen on the previous slides. So right now, we, um, you know, we regulate, um, the minimums, and they're large. Pasco's common housing model is a single-family home on a large lot. Uh, there's nothing that says you must have a townhome or a fifteen-foot front yard or rear yard setback. Um, you can certainly go larger or bigger or more creative, but you can also go smaller should you have appropriate, uh, shaped properties or you're, you're responding to a particular market segment.
Thank you. Other questions? Commissioner Handler?
Yeah, I think you answered my question. Uh, my concern was, there's still opportunities for flexibility, uh, if I read, read you correctly, which I think is important. That if they want to have a dormer, they don't have to have, they don't have to look like that. There's different ways to, to skin the cat. So I think you've answered my question, but just wanted to reaffirm that. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners on the phone? Uh, I had a quick question, if there's no questions on the phone. Um, on, well, a couple of things is, will this, do you anticipate this applying to all of our zoning codes or just some of the more medium and high-density or even the low-density you'll apply these design standards to?
There, there will be some minor revisions to the, uh, not, maybe not likely to the RS20 and RS12.
Yeah.
Uh, be, in the grand scheme of things, within the urban growth area, those zoning codes don't necessarily comply with our comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
But, uh, certainly within the R1 through R4, probably particularly with R2 through R4. Um, there probably are, uh, standards that would change for all of them, particularly the equal to dwelling height standard that exists for all of our, um, our zoning code. That's likely to be, uh, a proposed recommendation to change. Um, but I think, uh, I think where this proposal differentiates, for instance, from the House 1923 efforts is we're getting actually to the specifics, uh, which allow courtyard apartments to develop with flexibility, but actually emphasizing that they have an open space component. And the end result that, uh, the Planning Commission will see before the recommendation that we would hope for is a, a design guideline that, uh, has a lot of illustrative graphics, visualizations that encourage a particular design and also identifies what would not be appropriate. For instance, in an open space area, a, anything could technically count as open space, but a two-by, a two-foot by eight-foot rectangle does not count as open space. So we'd do things to make sure that that's not what we're ending up with.
Thank you. And then the only other question, I, I recall last, uh, commission meeting in February that you had a, we had a conversation, or you presented the difference between gross and net density. And, um, it says that, I, I recall from, I'm just looking at the minutes, and it's net density yields higher density acre, but yet we use gross density. Is that, is the, will the recommendations, uh, be that Pasco continues to use gross then?
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe we'll be, uh, recommending a change to how we, uh, define density in the city of Pasco.
Okay, thank you. Other commissioners, questions or feedback for staff? Well, hearing none, and I guess we can, uh, close the, uh, workshop portion. Thank you for, um, and the next steps on this is we'll see this again with some additional discussion in April and towards, then we'll start seeing maybe the actual revisions.
Yeah, I, I think if, if the Planning Commission is comfortable with it, then we will prepare a public hearing notification for April. Um, and, and the next staff report, you will see a little bit, you will see a little bit more on the technical side. So we see more tables, um, probably some additional graphics, but certainly there'll be more on the tabular side. So we can start to see what the actual amendments look like, and then we can refine those, uh, before the, uh, likely second public hearing in, uh, in May.
Commissioner Handler?
Yeah, I have another question. Uh, Jacob, can you go back a couple of slides where you had the, the cluster of homes? Uh, can you do that? It was the one that had the, um, elevations of the homes. Maybe, maybe I missed it. Not that one, maybe. This one, I think was, I was referring to it. And again, it's, just for conversational purposes, all, all the roofs look like they're twelve-twelve roofs. And so you, you're not saying, I'm, I'm, pardon my rhetorical question here, but if somebody comes in with six-twelve or four-twelve or whatever, they, it, they'll, they're not, they're not going to have to, to all be twelve-twelve roofs, right? I mean, I'm, I'm asking a dumb question, but just wanted to bring it up.
No, no, great, great question. And no, that, that would kind of be in the opposition of what the proposal of this entire, uh, amendment is intended to do. It's, it, within parameters, different roof lines would be allowed.
Right.
Um, I think what this slide's trying to do, and maybe it's not the best way to illustrate that, is, which is, certain common features would be permitted specifically regards to context of a neighborhood. You know, I don't want to use the word character, but certainly neighborhood surroundings. But, uh, stark differences perhaps may be a little bit more challenging. And so we would try as best we can in guidelines to encourage, um, uh, similar, but not mimic.
Yeah.
And, and maybe, um, Ferruce Onesa, if you're still on the, on the line, might be able to provide additional input.
Yeah, I can, I can add to that. Um, thanks for the question, and thanks, Jacob. I, you, you are right on, on the question that it's, it's not intended to have the same roofline for each and every building, because different types of building would make a neighborhood character more interesting and exciting. And, uh, so, so there is a, a code standards generally like twelve, twelve-three, twelve by four. So there are certain standards that code generally requires, so we're going to look at that. So within that range, you could have many different types of slopes. And also, it's not intended to, um, eliminate flat roof type buildings either, although the intent of this sketch is to show that it's just the consistency that you, we need to, um, to maintain. But even for a flat roof, you might have like really great design products. So that's where the flexibility comes in. So, yeah, great, great question. It's, it's not a dumb question. It is a, it is a great question. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or feedback, commissioners?
This is Commissioner Bowers.
Go ahead, Commissioner Bowers.
And it, uh, I just would like to say, nice job. I'm really happy to see so many options being created and also in partnership with the Home Builders Association.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowers. Great comment. I agree. Anyone else? Okay, I think we can wrap the workshop. Um, we, I don't believe we have other business on the agenda.
Just really quickly, Mr. Chair, um, the Downtown Master Plan slash Lewis Street Corridor Improvement, uh, second workshop is next Tuesday, or thi- this coming Tuesday, excuse me, at six, uh, PM until roughly eight PM. And it's, uh, I want to say four-eleven Lu- Lewis Street, right next to the post office. Uh, it'll be an open house style event, so there'll be plenty of opportunity to provide comments, to come and go as you see fit, or listen to some, uh, presentations in the meantime.
Thank you.
I, I've actually got two more items to, just to share, good, good news. Um, uh, that, uh, the city of Pasco received notice this week from the Washington State Department of Commerce that our Housing Action Implementation Plan, uh, will receive funding for the, the commerce, uh, funding program. So that'll allow us to, uh, uh, kind of push that effort forward, certainly allow for more partnerships and collaboration with stakeholders. And along those lines, uh, on Monday, we were notified that Pasco was one of nine cities selected nationally to participate in a Pure Cities Network, uh, funded and hosted by New York University's Furman Center of Housing and the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation. Um, the city's team is made up of four different agencies, including the city of Pasco, the Port of Pasco, the Benton Franklin Health District, and the Housing Authority of Pasco and Franklin County. So we will be participating in a ten-month program, essentially throughout the rest of twenty-two, working with eight other cities across the country to, to work on collaborating, identifying solutions to address, uh, both, uh, housing equity and, and housing access. So we look forward to sharing, uh, the, uh, the results, but certainly as we move forward through that program. And wanted to share that with the Planning Commission this evening.
Congratulations. That's great. That's a pretty, both, both of those things are awesome. So thank you. All right, um, with no other business, um, I recommend a motion to adjourn, or, um, I, I'm actually reading the fine print here, and we actually do require, I don't think we've done that before, but.
I think so. Mr. Chair, may I, uh, move that we close the meeting tonight?
Uh, I second. Commissioner Myram moved and Commissioner Handler seconded. Moved and seconded, the meeting is adjourned at seven thirteen PM.